Hey, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this March sixteenth meeting of the Zion City Council Order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Fireson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three is a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic where we can stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioner McDowell, would you lead us in prayer this evening?
Yes. I want to thank you for your protection of our city. I want to thank you and pray for those that are continuing to suffer from COVID-19 virus. We pray, Lord, for health and healing. I want to thank you for your protection of our city employees, police, fire, public works, and building department, and financial department. Lord, thank you for bringing us together, living here in this place. We ask, Lord, that you would allow us to prosper and to flourish. Pray for your blessing, and, Lord, we ask for your guidance in this meeting. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner McDowell. Item number four, agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes by any of the commissioners? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson? Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number five, citizen comments.
I have a comment from Denise Lear. "Thank you, Police Chief Barton, for listening about overnight parking. My question is, how many tickets have been written, and can we sometime in the future, dollar figure of funds collected so far?" Number two, "With the city in a deficit, has the city explored enforcing other ordinances which could bring in revenue?" Number three, "I've spoken to the police about a person taking the garbage and was told nothing could be done. Is there anything to keep this person out of the garbage?" This is daily. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other citizen comments?
Just, just a reminder to the public that are attending, if you do a reaction and raise your hand, that's how we'll know to call on you for citizen comments.
Going once, going twice. Item number six is consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on March second, two thousand twenty-one at seven PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on March second, two thousand twenty-one at eight ten PM.
I'll move to approve the next of March second.
There's second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Bills vouchers one three six nine two five through one three seven zero one four drawn on Huntington National Bank, total five hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and eight cents.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the bills.
There's second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number seven, consider passing ordinance as follows, seven A approving, authorizing, and ratifying an emergency sirens, siren maintenance contract per Chief Street.
Thank you, sir, Mayor and Board. This is a budgeted item out, out of the ESDA Communications Budget. This was typically January, February, but I believe it might have been missed in the shuffle of the administration change. This is just the vehicle to service the emergency sirens that are tested monthly but also go off for tornadoes and other emergencies. So we do need to get those serviced, and I believe the one on top of City Hall right now has been malfunctioning. So the sooner we can get this approved and submitted to the company, we'll get that taken care of.
All right, thank you, Chief Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number eight, discussion authorization and approval. Eight A, request permission to add an additional lieutenant position in the police department per Chief Barton.
Evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Thank you. I respectfully request the approval of promotion of an additional lieutenant position at this time. The, I believe there's a greater need to bolster the, the top leadership of the department, hedge against some institutional loss of knowledge and procedural processes. I therefore ask you to reduce the number of authorized personnel from the rank of sergeant from nine to eight, and increase the authorized personnel at the rank of lieutenant from two to three. Sure you're aware of this meeting. I, this has been, I requested the name to be released from the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners held on March ninth, and I've spoken with Commissioner, or City Minister Nabel, and this will be a, a cost neutral, or relatively cost neutral, move and change within the department.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to add the additional lieutenant position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number eight B, consider request from Zoe Life Academy to waive all fees associated with a new special use permit and occupancy inspection fee associated with the special use permit for twenty-six twenty-nine Sheridan Road per Director Iansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Zoe Life Academy is considering two alternate locations for proposed daycare located at twenty-six twenty-nine Sheridan Road and an elementary school located at fourteen fifteen twenty-seventh Street, both of which require special use permit. The owner is requesting City Council waive all fees associated with new special use permits that she will need for both proposed locations. She's also requesting all occupancy inspection fees be waived.
Is there a motion to approve the request for the waiving off fees associated with special use permit?
I'll make the motion to approve waiving the fees for the special use for twenty-six twenty-nine Sheridan.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Second.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Oh, can we discuss? Can we discuss this?
Sure.
Certainly.
Sorry. Commissioner Holmes?
The basis for the request to waive all fees, what, what is the basis for that?
Well, this, this is something that we previously agreed upon when the site down at the industrial area was not the right site.
Okay.
And as a council, we pretty much said that with the new location, in addition to helping them to look for a new location, we are pretty much said that we would waive the fees associated with the permit and occupancy inspection fees at the new location. So this is for the daycare center operations that will be moving to twenty-six twenty-nine Sheridan Road.
Okay.
And that being the industrial district.
Okay.
Um, just a clarification, Director Iansson, I think combined both of those in, in what he read, if I'm not mistaken. So they're actually two separate items on the agenda. One, one is for the, the daycare at, what's the address there?
Twenty-six twenty-nine.
And the other is for a, a new special use permit and occupancy inspection fees waived at fourteen fifteen twenty-seventh Street. So Director Iansson, you read both of those, but we're only acting on, on the first one, is that correct? The?
The motion is only for twenty-six twenty-nine.
Okay.
That's the motion that's currently on the floor.
Okay.
And we had a second, and is there more discussion or questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number eight C, consider request from Zoe Life Academy to waive all fees associated with a new special use permit and occupancy inspection fees associated with the special use permit for fourteen fifteen twenty-seventh Street per Director Iansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the second locations where she's requesting a waiver of fees.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'll move to, on this one, I'm going to move to deny the waiver.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'm in a second.
Second. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that in the past, the council has, waiving fees are exceptions, not the rule. We have waived for some uses. I believe I remember a church, we waived the fees, the permit fees for signage. They wanted to put an electronic sign. But in this case, this is a new enterprise. This is a totally new request, and I don't want to set the precedent of waiving fees in every case. I think we still have to follow our procedures. So that's why I moved to deny this request.
Thank you for the explanation, Commissioner Fisher. We had a first and a second. Is there any more, any more questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
I'm voting, I, to deny the request.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson? What was that?
Aye.
Okay. Miss, Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number nine, departmental commentary. Director Iansson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just recently melted snow in the high winds we've had in past weeks. We've got a lot of wind blown debris throughout the neighborhoods. We're asking everybody, take a few minutes, pick up the debris around your property and go a long way to keep the community looking nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Iansson. Director Roberts? Is Director Roberts here this evening?
He was unable to make it to the meeting tonight.
Okay. I, I would just say, for Director Roberts, I, I know that in driving around the city the last several days, his crew has been out busy cleaning out the catch basins on the corners, and with the melting of snow and the debris that's been on the streets, I, I think each of us citizens can lend a hand to our very limited Public Works crew and kind of clean the debris from the drains around your house as the rains, as the snow is melting. So they've been doing a good job in starting their patching program and other things. Commissioner McDowell, would you like to comment more on the activities of the Public Works Department?
I think you've covered it, Mayor.
All right. Administrator Nabel?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that current vehicle stickers expire on April thirtieth of this year. Starting April first, you can submit your application for your vehicle stickers along with payment, checks or money orders only by mail to City Hall at twenty-eight twenty-eight Sheridan Road. You can also drop it off at the drop box outside. The fees are all on the website as well as the application. If you go to the cityofzion.com, on the left, upper left kind of corner, there'll be a, a city sticker renewal, and as well as the detail, detailed information. Seniors, active military, and handicapped can make, can make in-person appointments to renew their stickers. Those current stickers will run from May first of, will be effective from May first of two thousand twenty-one to April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. So it is a two-year sticker. The general fee for standard automobiles is fifty dollars. For seniors sixty-five to sixty-nine, it's half of that, twenty-five. Senior seventy-plus, that you get one free, as well as active duty military and handicap is a dollar. So please get those addressed as soon as possible.
Thank you, Administrator Nabel. And if I'm correct, those forms can also be picked up in the vestibule in front of City Hall?
Correct. We'll also be sharing, sharing the links to Facebook accounts as well as we, it's the, the sale, we, we're going on sale April first, so we're gonna roll that out at that point. I believe we've been mailing those forms out as part of the water bills as well to include for people, so they don't have to make the trip. We, we made a copy of the application to include the water bills.
Great, great, great information, Administrator Nabel. Chief Barton?
Again, good evening. I just wanted to remind the, the public and the citizens of our community, as things start to warm up and we might have some more activity, Crime Stoppers notified us that their tip level is down, so I just want to encourage the public, if you see something, say something, eight four seven six six two twenty-two twenty-two, or P3tips dot com is a good way to notify us, and they direct, they directly report us the information but not your name.
Could you repeat that number again, Chief?
Sure, it's eight four seven six six two twenty-two twenty-two.
All right, thank you. Chief Street?
Good evening again, Mayor. Thank you. Just a couple of brief things. First thing is a reminder to all of our residents about the Blackboard Connect system that the city utilizes. We'd urge all of the residents to go to the city website or our Fire Department Facebook for some notes about how to sign up for the Blackboard Connect, and briefly what that is, is it's a way that we will get messages out to the city for variety of things that would be beneficial to you. You can enter with a phone number, or an email address, or a cell phone to get text messages, or all three. And when we have something noteworthy to pass along, we'll send that out, and it'll go right, right to you. So we'd urge everybody to check that out. And again, check the City of Zion website for that, or the Fire Department Facebook page, which we've shared some instructions on how to sign up for that. You know, the second one is just about an incident we had recently. You know, many times, our calls end up in negative outcomes, but we had a positive outcome on Saturday night. The fire situation was bad. We don't like when our residents have fires, but our crews was able to assist one of the occupants out before getting too much smoke. And, you know, when we're back in person, we might bring that crew in for a little bit of recognition, recognition that just doesn't happen very often, but we're happy that they were able to put their skills to use and, and save a life over the weekend. Otherwise, business as usual.
All right, thank you, Chief Street.
Mayor, real quick, if I can interrupt, actually, Director Roberts is on the call. I just didn't recognize his cell phone number, so he'd like to make a comment as well.
Director Roberts?
Make a liar out of me, Ray. I see him unmuted, but I can't hear.
There, but.
It says I'm unmuted.
There you are.
There you go. Oh, okay, sorry about that. I'm sorry about that, sir. My, my computer decided to quit working on me tonight, or yesterday, so I'm still trying to figure out the cell phone deal. I wanted to update council real quick on some street light issues. I have had a conversation with our ComEd rep, Edith Ruiz. She wanted me to pass on that they have moved up the installation of the LEDs for the City of Zion, for the ComEd-owned lights, to be completed within this year. At the same time, we are finalizing our application that the city put in for the upgrade for all the city-owned street lights. So ComEd owns mostly within the city about a thousand lights, and then the, the city owns shared and road lights and the subdivisions, which comes right around about seven hundred lights. All this should be completed by the end of this year.
That's terrific. That's terrific news. I, I know Denise Lear, who had made a comment about the city lights, probably be before the pandemic hit, which is, think about it, the shelter in place order by Governor Pritzker was on March sixteenth last year, and we had said we'd been working on this issue, and now with the new rep in town for ComEd that's been working closely with our staff and all of our departments, that's terrific news to kind of shine the light on crime.
Yes, sir. Ms. Ruiz has been instrumental in this, pushing this along for us. So I'd, I'd love to thank her. I know, Nabel, Dave Nabel and myself have been working on this issue for a couple of years, and we kept running into a lot of roadblocks. So she has been able to tear those down and get us pointed and get us moving in the right, right position, direction there. I do have one more announcement. I know a few of the Commissioners have been asked about the spring leaf vacuuming program. Tentatively, we are looking at April twenty-sixth for a two-week period to May eighth. I will have this finalized and posted by the end of this week.
Sounds, sounds great. Ray, with the spring fast approaching, do we have a timeline with what's happening with the, the patching program, when that might start again? Are we waiting for it to get a little warmer?
One, we're waiting for it to get a little warmer. Two, we have to put the bid docs together internally and figure out locations and go out to bid. We're hoping to do that by mid-April. They have the bid docs out, and then a, a bid around the first or second week of May.
Okay. Thank you, Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir.
Do any of our Commissioners have any commentary they'd like to make?
Oh, I'll, I'll jump in, Mayor McKinney. Just a reminder that we are still, there's still the need to wear a mask. Vaccines are coming. Mayor McKinney will probably talk about, you know, the vaccinations that we're getting done in cooperation with Cancer Treatment Centers of America. But, but in the meantime, even if you've been vaccinated, it's probably a good idea to still wear a mask for a while until things kind of... And please support local businesses and order out for rest if at all possible. So just my usual plug.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioners have any comments? Well, I'll, I'll jump in with just the commentary that Commissioner Fisher talked about the vaccine. I, I really want to thank the people over at the Cancer Treatment Center, Pete Kavortian, Jake Kavortian, Julie Pendleton, Pendleton, excuse me, and Thomas Martin for opening up days at the Cancer Treatment Center for our residents to get vaccinated. And I know as more vaccine arrives, as they get more, we'll probably have more dates in the future, but we vaccinated probably over a, a thousand people from May, March first and second, March eighth and ninth, and the last days were March fifteenth and sixteenth. So thank you for, from all of us, our citizens, and some people in the surrounding areas were able to benefit from getting the vaccine and be able to chance to see our town. I really want to thank all of our Commissioners for the work that they've done in calling residents and letting them know that this was, these opportunities were available, and the volunteers, I, I can't say enough for the volunteers, how intense it was to call people up and to man the phone lines and be able to call everybody back, and it was really organized effort in a very short period of time. And it can't be done without just a collaborative effort with all of the entities that I, that I mentioned. Also, as I was saying, March sixteenth was the first shelter in place order that was presented by Governor Pritzker, and our lives have changed over the last year. Commissioner McDowell said in his prayer, people are still hurting, and I, I know that we, as a, as a city, we've made some changes in being able, being flexible with people making payments, not shutting off water, things that are critical. And I want to thank Administrator Nabel and the staff for talking about those issues as they've impacted our citizens. But if you still have issues during this time, don't hesitate to call the two-one-one number that the United Way has established, because they can help you address some of the issues. And there might be financial, it could be mental and emotional. This pandemic and being sheltered in place has taken a toll on all of us. All of our tempers are, are a little short at times, because it's, you feel like you're being locked in a cave, even though you like your house. So it's getting warmer now, and we hope everybody that, as they come out of their houses, continue to abide by the social distancing guidelines, have some respect for your neighbors, and, and wear a mask when you're in public, especially when you're in stores when six feet spacing is not possible. So thank you for the cooperation for everybody. Thank you for our staff that's worked so hard during this period to have the operation that City Hall and all through the city continue to run smoothly, in spite of City Hall just being open by appointment only. Item number ten is announcement on April second, city offices are closed for the holiday. April sixth, which is also the election date, we have a Zion City Council meeting at seven PM. April thirteenth, at six PM, we have our annual town meeting. And April twentieth, April seems like a long month now, six PM Zion Township Board meeting and a seven PM City Council meeting. Item number eleven, is there a motion to go into closed session pursuant to five ILCS one-twenty open meetings for the discussion of file pending and or probable or imminent litigation, collective bargaining, and personnel? Is there a motion?
I'll move to go to closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. All right. Item number twelve, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Who, who is the motion? I'm sorry.
Commissioner McDowell, and I seconded.
Commissioner Holmes? Oh, boy.
I think she may have left the meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Everybody drive safe.
All right.
Commissioner Holmes, real quick, motion to adjourn. Are you an eye on that?
Aye, Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
All right.
All right. Take care.